We don't need all, everyone's meeting.
Hi, you guys are lucky, there was supposed to be no air. Just don't put it in my face, okay?
I'll point this way.
I was so brave, we were close to being nowhere. The building shuts its AC off. So, the landlord's.
Anything's better than outside right now.
Yeah, it's hot out there. It's a scorcher. Do we have extra chairs?
We only have chairs we have, so how many more do we need?
No, I just.
People will give up their seats for the board.
Okay, what's your name? Marty.
Carvino?
Carvino, Marty, social member? Okay, I'll let it go tonight.
For the purpose of introductions, Mr. Robb, can we introduce the board members or do you want to wait until the meeting?
When we're.
Sure.
Do we have a court reporter here?
Yes.
Yes, I can. Yeah.
Yeah.
Sir?
Go around the table or.
Robb? For the purpose of Mr. Cecil?
Oh, sure, okay, just, yeah. I'm Rob Weinberg, Attorney General. I advise the board.
So, Dr. Greg Miller, acting chair.
I'm Vince Paredo, the board secretary.
I'm Linda Perez, board member. We can't hear.
Yeah, we can't hear at all.
I'm Linda Perez, board member.
Hey, everybody?
Ed Stanley, position assistant, board member.
I believe that's everybody, right?
Is this being recorded now?
It's not, not recorded right now. Sorry, would you like to sit?
Oh, no. Okay, we're waiting for a more attorney.
I'm sorry, sir, I'm going to ask you to find a place and this, you know, this isn't something open, this is a hearing. Everybody get comfortable.
So, right now, we're waiting for Assistant Attorney General Ben Abrams. We're waiting.
Are you folks proceeding with the matter, Dr. Joseph, because if you are, I'd like to place something on the record before you guys do so.
Well, I think we're going to wait for Ben Abrams to come, hopefully.
I'm sorry.
Shouldn't we wait for Mr. Abrams to appear?
Well, I don't know.
Let's give him one more minute.
I agree really with you, so if you guys haven't started, that's fine.
No, okay.
If we have not started, is it, are we allowed to address the board? Mr. Chair, first thing?
Technically, it's not what we're here for, we just have to answer one question that has to do with this, with the AG's office to answer. So, we prefer just to wait because what would happen is if we opened it up for that, then we got to just immediately stop it as soon as Mr. Abrams comes in.
I have to hear your points. Yeah.
Could somebody give up a chair for Mr. Abrams, please?
Okay, are we ready to start? Do you need two minutes, Mr. Abrams? Sure, you're ready to go.
I'm, I'm ready.
Okay.
Sorry I'm late.
No, okay, that happens. So, this is the Board of Allied Health Examiners, it's about eight minutes after six, July twenty-third, and the hearing has to do with Dr. Joel Joseph. Everybody's been introduced already, our hearing officer, Mr. Cecil.
Yeah, my name is Benjamin Cecil, I'm an attorney, was, serving as the hearing officer.
Okay, all right, then. And so, the first order of business that we'll go into is there's a request for recusal. So, do you want to.
Well, Mr. Luhan, that's your motion, do you want to address it?
I believe, yes, that there's two pending multiple rather declarations asking for recusals, and the declarations disstate the basis. In fact, you know, on the two pending declarations, one, rather, I believe Ms. Linda Perez is the, you know, is the one that's mentioned twice.
Excuse me, I, Mr. Luhan knows that I respect him and I hate to interrupt, but as a procedural point, this is a meeting call for one purpose and one purpose only. I think it's, I know he's filed, there have been some of these declarations filed, but that's not on the agenda, that's not part of this, the purpose of this meeting. So, to allow this meeting to morph over into items which were not part of the reason for calling this meeting, items that were not on the agenda, that can wait until the hearing on the merits takes place. But any, any other subject other than summary suspension is not on the table for tonight. So, with all due respect to Mr. Luhan, I think as a procedural point, we just, we're not able to entertain his argument and the declarations at this time for this special meeting.
Hold on, I'm going to ask you all to move away from me, please.
Give some space, please, and some professional respect and courtesy to our board members and the hearing's folks that are here. Thank you.
Could I respond to that?
Yes.
First of all, Ben, it was the board's counsel that asked me. Secondly, it's rather late, you know, for you to be raising this so-called that it's not on the, on the agenda. Because last, I believe, two weeks ago, when this matter first came before the board, you know, two of the board members did entertain the motion and did recuse themselves. In fact, one did voluntarily recuse, the other one, the other one, that insisted that she recuse herself. So, it's rather late for you, you know, to now be saying that we shouldn't be entertaining that, and now it's late, it's rather hypocritical for you to be saying that we shouldn't do this and we should proceed with what we've got and, and make a decision, and if the members are found, you know, let's say that, you know, should have disqualified themselves, you know, money, selling it, it's okay. So, but I believe that in the interest of economy, you know, whether it's judicial economy or board, board economy, that the issue should first be resolved. Okay, so that's, that's one. The other, I do have other issues that I want to bring up, for example, your competence to.
Excuse me, we're only addressing the.
Mr. Luhan, Mr. Abrams, my advice to the board right now is to go ahead and entertain the motions to disqualify, it's been stated there since the last time we met. Since they'll be asked to adjudicate summary suspension anyway, it's appropriate that the board determine whether they're qualified or need to disqualify themselves.
Well, may I respond to Mr. Luhan, and I believe that on questions of law, we have a hearing officer, and board counsel is certainly entitled to express his opinion as to what he thinks the board should or shouldn't do, but we're lucky to have a hearing officer on matters of law. And I think it's within the purview of the function, hearing officer's function, that we have a ruling on this. Or at least, he could advise the board as to what he feels the, the right legal determination of Mr. Luhan's argument is. But to respond to Mr. Luhan, he's absolutely right, Mr. Luhan is absolutely correct that at the last board meeting, the subject of disqualification came up, and that was proper. I never made an objection at that time, because that was a board meeting for general issues. That's not the case tonight. And it's true that I advised, or I expressed my opinion as to whether certain board members should step back or not. But that's not why we're here tonight, it's not untimely, it's not late, because I already raised it, if Mr. Luhan had anything to say about disqualification, it should have been done at the last board hearing. Or in fact, it can be done before there's a hearing on the merits, which, if summary suspension is entered, which I expect it will be, that has to be done within thirty days. So, we had a chance last time, tonight's not the night, and next time, he has another chance. So, I'm going to defer to the hearing officer as to whether he thinks the board should go into these side issues that weren't on the agenda for tonight or not.
Okay, the first, first of all, may I respond? First of all, you are incorrect. Last meeting, the motion to disqualify was not, you know, to the, to certain board members as to general matters, it was as to Dr. Joseph's matter only. Okay, so you're wrong on that one. And we are here still on that same matter. And there was one declaration that, or motion that was filed that was not ruled upon last night. And that's the one that has to do with Dr. Miller, Mr. Pareda, and Ms. Perez. That was not entertained last time, unlike the other two, as far as I know, and I sat, rather, stood here all the time. So, you know, so I just wanted to make two, to clear the record, you know, and that, our objection, well, you know, is not to, whatever was on the agenda, it was to one particular matter on the agenda that has to do with Dr.
Just, just one more time, Mr. Luhan, all of, all of what you say is irrelevant, because we're only going to consider at a special meeting, what is on the agenda for the special meeting. And you, and your, your disqualification argument is not on the agenda for tonight, and it would be unlawful for this, in my opinion, for this board to consider ancillary matters at this special meeting.
Okay, wait, okay, now, what we'd like to do is defer just to Mr. Cecil for his opinion on.
All right, I could give an opinion, I wasn't privy to the last meeting, so I could only give an opinion as to what, my reading of the disqualification provision is in the administrative adjudication law. It simply provides that any party may request a disqualification of any hearing officer or agency member by filing affidavit, which I assume has happened, prior to taking the evidence of the hearing. It does not say, however, that it has to be specifically on the agenda, so I think this board can consider it, if they want to at this point, if it's requested in disqualification.
But Mr. Hearing Officer, prior to taking evidence is correct, and we're not here to take evidence tonight.
What are we here for?
We're here to consider summary suspension on the basis of the materials before the board.
Is the board going to be making a decision on anything?
I'm sorry.
Is the board going to be making any decision on anything?
They will be.
Okay, and so, is the board member that's being requested to disqualify himself or herself here today?
May I add, Mr. Hearing Officer, that we are here prior, you know, this, this meeting is, you know, a meeting prior to taking evidence, which would mean, you know, that, that motion is, you know, a relevant motion at this time.
What kind, is everybody going to vote on a decision, what kind of decision?
But we're not taking evidence tonight, prior to taking evidence would be before the evidentiary hearing, which if they summarily suspend, has to be by law held within thirty days.
Mr. Cecil, the, the purpose of the, of the call of this meeting is to consider summary suspension.
Consider, will they be making a decision today?
Without evidence.
Without evidence?
Without taking evidence, without any testimony, without any additional.
So, what are they basing their decision on?
On the first amended specification of charges in this matter.
Just the pleadings?
That's right.
And you don't have to put on any evidence?
No, and this is not an evidentiary hearing, of course not.
And, if I may differ, you see, last night, I was, my understanding, and that's why I wrote a letter to Mr. Weinberg to follow up. My understanding last time was that the board was going to meet on the twenty-third today, and the purpose was simply to analyze the charges, not to make decisions, to analyze it. That's my understanding, and that's why when the, when the notice came out, I wrote a letter to Mr. Weinberg. My understanding is Mr. Weinberg probably has not received it, and perhaps it's because the AG's office has been moving. But I wrote that letter, I believe, to people and had that delivered to his office for clarification. So, that's, you know, so our position is that the notice that went out based on what occurred last week is really an incorrect notice. Because that's not my understanding of what was to occur this day.
How many people here are you, have you filed an affidavit to disqualify?
Well, we filed an affidavit, two of them are disqualified, so we don't need to address that, but, you know, one affidavit for Dr. Miller, Mr. Pareda, and Ms. Perez. And then a subsequent affidavit for Ms. Perez alone.
So, you're trying to disqualify five members of the board?
We're not trying to disqualify anything, you know, we're putting in what we believe, you know, our basis for disqualification. And, you know, of course, we're preserving our record, it's up to them what they want to do.
Two members, two, two members of the board have voluntarily recused and disqualified themselves.
Okay.
Andy Balajacha and Sybil Prasostamo. Mr. Luhan's motion to disqualify is directed at the remaining three board members.
All right, well, the, the provision on law says if the disqualification would prevent the existence of a quorum qualified to act in a particular case, an agency member shall not withdraw voluntarily or be subject to disqualification. So, if they get disqualified, will that change, would that affect the existence of a quorum?
That would leave us with two.
Well.
Yeah, we would have no quorum.
You would have no quorum.
What do we have, five members here or four members?
Six.
I don't, five members and six, six here, and what is a quorum? Four? Or five? I don't know, I'm asking.
Without the rules, I, I need to take a look at that. I know there's nine members, correct?
Yeah.
So, five would be a quorum.
Yeah, if there are nine members, five.
And so, if we disqualify these people, would that end our quorum, is my question?
Yes.
All right, well, the rules provide that they don't, they're not subject to disqualification.
Let's move on.
Now, I do have, want to raise one matter again preliminarily. I do not think Mr. Abrams is competent to sit as an assistant attorney general or to practice law in the territory.
I'm going to object to all of this, this is a personal attack on Ben Abrams, it's not on the agenda, and he's filed no papers. He's filed no notice, he's way out of line here, and I object to any further talk about it, with all due respect.
I am putting on the record, so if I may be allowed to put on the record, you guys can do whatever you want, and Mr. Abrams can do what he wants. But, you know, as the hearing officer knows, the purpose for a lot of these things is simply to create a record, so when it goes to superior court, the judge knows what occurred here. I took the deposition of Mr. Abrams last week, or two weeks ago, and Mr. Abrams, in his deposition, testified that he was admitted, you know, to the cross-territory high courts around early seventies.
Mr. Luhan, I didn't want to interrupt you, but have you, have you filed something?
No, no, because we just learned this last week, we just learned this last week.
He's got a week to file something.
Mr. Abrams, Mr. Abrams, Mr. Hearing Officer, if I can suggest that for, at the moment, we have nothing before the board, and Mr. Abrams is presumed competent. If for some reason you have something else that later, you know, I suggest you introduce it at that time, I think we need to move forward.
Well, first of all, I disagree that you have nothing before the board, you have me before the board mentioning it. Secondly, the presumption that he is competent, you know, is a rebuttable one. And I'm, you know, rebutting it through evidence that Mr. Abrams gave under oath last week.
Excuse me, only an incompetent lawyer would even raise this kind of thing.
I just want to put on the record, what are you afraid of, Mr. Abrams?
I'm not afraid, I'm afraid of wasting time.
So then, allow me to waste my breath, okay?
But only an incompetent lawyer would say these things, don't you understand that?
Mr. Abrams was admitted to practice in the TT, he testified, in early seventies, came to Guam, was admitted, he says, in seventy-four, through reciprocity with the TT High Courts. Well, however, and Mr. Abrams has not mentioned this, in nineteen seventy-eight, Mr. Abrams got suspended for three years by the TT High Courts. And Mr. Abrams got suspended in the state of Florida as a result of the TT High Court's suspension of Mr. Abrams in nineteen eighty-one. Now, Mr. Abrams was, you know, suspended, subject to be reinstated, provided he takes certain, you know, remedial steps. Mr. Abrams, to this day, has not taken that, so Mr. Abrams remains suspended.
In Florida?
In Florida, under TT High Courts.
No.
Now, let, let me finish, please, please, you get your chance, Mr. Abrams, you get your chance. Mr. Abrams, so if Mr. Abrams is here, and he admitted he's never taken a bar examination except Florida, where he's now not admitted, that, you know, if the basis that allows him to practice in Guam was because of his, you know, admission in the cross-territory High Courts and because of reciprocity, if that basis has now dissipated because he's been suspended and never been reinstated, then Mr. Abrams, who I take it has never reported this suspension to the Guam Bar, or to, you know, to the Guam Bar, then Mr. Abrams is not admitted, really qualified to practice law in Guam. Now, you can say what you want.
I have a quick question for the hearing officer.
Yeah, until the Guam Bar makes an indication or the Supreme Court says that Mr. Abrams is not licensed to practice or competent to practice law, he's perfectly.
Well, I'm putting it on the record, and I believe that it behooves you folks to be aware that you may be wasting your time there, so.
He's competent as of today, so he could continue.
Okay, now, the board would like to continue with a question at hand.
That's a very good idea.
Request for summary suspension of the license to practice veterinary medicine by Dr. Joel Joseph. So, you know, Peter Vee, his lawyers, talk down a little bit.
Mr. Hearing Officer?
Now, you were telling me there was, wasn't going to be any evidence taken.
No, but argument, yes.
Okay, so are you.
We have given Mr. Luhan, for example, an opportunity to appear and be heard on behalf of Mr. Joseph. And, of course, the disciplinary counsel, namely myself, is ready to make an explanation to the board as to why I feel the grounds are there to summarily suspend, suspend Dr. Joseph.
Just based on your argument?
Well, that's, I'm not calling any witnesses or anything like that, the only documents I'll refer to are documents that are already before the board.
I don't think it's appropriate that the board make any decision without evidence.
No, but may I be heard on that point? You see, the summary suspension, Mr. Hearing Officer, is, is very analogous, as Mr. Weinberg will no doubt say himself, very analogous to a temporary restraining order. The grounds for summary suspension are that Dr. Joseph presents an imminent threat to the community. And likewise, in a temporary restraining order situation, we're talking about irreparable harm. Both are temporary, in a temporary restraining order situation, we have a ten-day rule. In a summary suspension situation, it's still temporary, but we have a thirty-day rule. And that rule is that upon summary suspension, a hearing on the merits has to be held, in the nature of a preliminary injunction, within thirty days. The law is clear on that. And the proposed order of summary suspension that I submit definitely calls for a hearing within thirty days. So, if the board believes that based on the materials before it, as is the court, in a temporary restraining order situation, entitled to restrain or to enter a mandatory injunction in the form of restraining order, this board has similar power. And also, like a temporary restraining order situation, there's no evidence presented at the TRO. at the TRO signing, there's only argument of counsel, and that's exactly what we're going to do tonight. And it's entirely proper that there not be any evidence or witnesses or testimony. That comes later, at the end of the thirty days, when the, when the evidentiary hearing on the merits has to commence by law.
But your argument is based on evidence like affidations, is it not?
Only materials that are already before the board. I'm not going to submit any evidence at all, and I don't imagine Mr. Luhon will be allowed to produce any evidence that isn't already on the table.
Mr. Hearing Officer, first of all, you know, at the last meeting, you know, it was very clear, because the board, I believe I got the feeling that the board wanted to go forward with the, I guess, the hearing that is, you know, to consider whether summary suspension was required. And if my memory serves me right, the advice from Mr. Weinberg was that it's going to take a long time, because there's going to be evidence that Mr. Abrams has to present, and it's going to take, you know, several evenings, and that's why it's scheduled for the evenings, and, you know, and so all that was discussed. So the fact that Mr. Abrams comes here without any evidence, really, you know, it's his fault. He knows what was expected of him. That's number one. Number two, the summary suspension of a license is not anything akin to an order to shortcuts. In an order to shortcuts setting, what we're doing is simply we're saying the, you know, we're ordering you not to do anything, okay? And you've got ten days to come forward and shortcuts, or tell me the judge why I should not continue with this order. In this case, the summary suspension, it's saying that you are barred from, you know, working, from earning a living, and with all the people around you, the employees, none of them, you know, would be able to earn a living with you for thirty days, and then you've got thirty days to come, you know, and appear, you know, and put on evidence if you so choose. But in the meantime, for however long that hearing takes, and after that hearing, for however long the board takes to make a decision, he remains unemployed, and soon so do all his employees. So there's a huge difference, and I do agree with your analysis that, you know, without any evidence, you know, and, and let me go address Mr. Abrams, you know, statement that he's basing it on documents that are with the board. Well, I'm sorry, I'm not the board. The only thing we have is the specification charges. There's no attachments to it. So is it fair that we are here and that we don't even know what those charges are? And for, you know, for your information, some of these charges really have absolutely nothing to do with health or, or safety for the community. Some of them have to do with, for example, you know, that Dr. Joseph resigned from, you know, his job in Fiji, and that makes Guam look bad in Fiji, okay? Or that Dr. Joseph, you know, said that this dog is this breed, and when this person took that dog to Minot, I believe Minnesota, or someplace up there north, you know, that there's a policy there that you can't have pit bulls there, and that this dog is a pit bull. Well, what does that have to do with the safety or the, you know, the health of the community? Nothing. But in any event, you know, the point is simply, and I agree with you, if Mr. Abrams wants a summary suspension, then earn it, Mr. Abrams, put on evidence.
Let me go ahead and give you the provision of law regarding summary suspension, which is ten GCA, Chapter twelve, one, two, two, one, zero, F. The board is authorized to summarily suspend a license prior to a formal hearing when it believes such action is required due to imminent threat to public health and safety. Okay, so that's the first thing the board has to consider, whether it will be imminent threat to public health and safety. Also, it says here that the proceedings for a formal hearing should be initiated simultaneously with the summary suspension. Okay? So this, the law is pretty clear, that it should be at the same time as a formal hearing, and if. And even then, the board should consider whether there is a threat to public health and safety at this point in time.
Mr. Hearing Officer, some of the charges.
I believe that the law requires a hearing to be set within thirty days for the, for the hearing on the merits. When it says simultaneously, what it's talking about is a notice of the hearing, which has to be held within thirty days, not the hearing itself that will be held simultaneously with the summary suspension.
It says here proceedings for a formal hearing should be instituted simultaneously. I see. You're saying that they could do it ahead of time and then set the hearing?
What, what they have to do is either have the hearing on day one, day two, day three, or on any day up to the thirty days, but they cannot wait longer than thirty days to set the hearing on the merits. But they don't have to have a hearing when they sign the summary suspension order.
Mr. Abrams, why do you think that there is an imminent threat to public health and safety?
Well, I'm prepared to argue that, but I'd like the, the first issue settled before we go into this at all.
Richard.
And that is, what we do tonight, and the only thing we do tonight, is hear argument both ways from Mr. Luhon and myself on whether we should enter a summary suspension order, and if that's, and then set the hearing within thirty days of today. If that's what we're going to do, I'm ready to go forward right now.
Mr. Luhon, first of all, Mr. Abrams has made presumptions when he says I'm going to argue, because I'm not going to give dignity to something in which, you know, we don't even know what the evidence is. He's got a statement of so-called charges, but we have no documents that back it up, at least, so that I'll be able to intelligently argue from those documents, or to try and rebut what he says. But I believe that you are correct, simultaneously must be given its commonsensical reading, not a legal reading, but a common sense reading. And as far as me tomorrow, with, in this being my second language, and understanding it, simultaneous means at the same time, okay? Not, Mr. Abrams has now retreated from his earlier statement that you summarily suspend him, give him thirty days, then, you know, he, we have a hearing in thirty days. Now, he's modifying it to say, oh, well, we suspend him now, and we continue it tomorrow, we have the hearing on the evidence, and day two, day three, day four. So it seems that Mr. Abrams, you know, as the wind shifts, his position also shifts.
You know, the common sense thing is this, Mr. Hearing Officer and board members, how much sense would it make to have a full-blown hearing on the merits tonight, and tomorrow night, and however many days it takes, and then set another, set the hearing on the merits in thirty days and do it all again? There can only be one hearing on the merits. And that provision of law in Title X that we just looked at provides for a hearing on the merits within thirty days after summary suspension, and it has to be set simultaneously with the summary suspension. Otherwise, we'd have two hearing on the merits, and that doesn't make sense, no matter what language you speak.
Okay, then, just a second. The hearing officer did ask a pointed question to Mr. Abrams. We need, as the board members, to find out what is the threat, so that's really what we'd like to guide in the further discussions, is help us make that decision.
But the problem with that is, they're, they're just relying on argument without any evidence.
That's what you do in a TRO situation too, Mr. Hearing Officer, it's no different.
That's not correct. With a TRO, you have a declaration that comes in, which is the evidence. You know, you should practice TRO.
We have a sworn statement of charges here, that's a form of the declaration.
No, 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 not by the accuser, but by the party. You are the judge and jury here, by, you know, saying that your sworn specification is sufficient without anyone attesting that everything in those, you know, all the allegations in the charges that you've raised in specifications are true. You know, you need an independent person to say that.
Well, I think the, the board members have expressed themselves that they're ready to hear what constitutes an imminent threat in order to make their minds up. I'm ready, go ahead.
I'm ready to hear it.
Mr. Hearing Officer?
My recommendation is that if you're going to make a decision like this today, I think it should have evidence.
Okay.
Okay, yes, the declaration is evidence and it's.
The declaration was filed with the First Amendment specification. It verifies the charges, so they're verified charges, just like in a temporary restraining order situation, you'd have an affidavit. That's what we have here, they're totally analogous.
What I would, I, I think this is just for fairness, and you guys making a decision like this, which is somebody's license, I do think that you should have a separate hearing. Perhaps if you want declarations from both sides, then you could make an informed decision that way. But I, I just don't think that it'd be appropriate for one side to argue with declarations filed and no rebuttal when you're taking somebody's license.
But Mr. Season, he's had, I don't know how long, to submit whatever declarations he wants to submit. The only declarations he's submitted are disqualification declarations. He had the chance to do that, he certainly had every opportunity before tonight to submit whatever kind of declarations in addition to that he felt he should submit, and he hasn't done it. So we have delayed this occasion to summarily suspend Dr. Joseph already, and I say, I say we get on with it.
Mr. Abrams has got this, you know, I guess, upside down. We don't have the burden of doing anything. You're the one that has the burden, sir.
That's true.
That's right. And we don't have to file anything. You're the one that must prove imminent, you know, danger, you know, to health and safety, not us. So you're the ones that must come forward with evidence, and by way of live people, okay? Not documents that we can cross-examine, not documents that we can.
This is not a hearing on the merits, Mr. Luhon.
Well, that's the hearing officer's prerogative.
Mr. Abrams, Mr. Luhon, Mr. Hearing Officer, the way I had been doing this, that it would be evidentiary, and that's why we held it over from the last time we met, and then we would become a formal.
That's what your impression was today?
That's what I thought we were doing. Now, it's, you know, it's difficult, but that it was going to be more in the nature of a preliminary, if we're, if we're going to equate it. Even a TRO has a affidavit, it's a declaration, there's some evidentiary support for a TRO, you would get that. So what I was thinking we were going to do was actually have some kind of evidentiary hearing on what you thought, Mr. Abrams, you know, your strongest arguments would be as to why these, the license should be summarily suspended pending a full hearing on everything. That's what I was, and I think that's what the board was anticipating as well.
Well, there was a sworn declaration supporting the First Amendment specification of charges, Mr. Weinberg. That is in the nature of how you file an application for a temporary restraining order with a sworn statement. We did the same thing here.
I, I've reviewed the, the sworn, the verification of the specification of charges that's filed, that's signed by Brian Cruz, and I will advise everybody here that, my view of that is that this is verifying that, but he does not have firsthand knowledge of any of the allegations in the complaint.
But he does.
I don't think he even claimed.
He says that he does, because he investigated the charges, he interviewed the witnesses, he's, he collected the exhibits, he was there when they searched the Wazal premises and found illegal controlled substances there. What other personal knowledge do you want, Mr. Weinberg?
And I would expect him to be here, so he'd be subject to cross.
But in a, but in a temporary restraining order situation, I heard you just say that there has to be a sworn statement to support the application for the TRO. We've done that, Mr. Weinberg.
Here's the difficulty that I'm having with the specification of charges. I do not see from those charges something that jumps out at me and says imminent threat. What I, what I think all the board would like to hear, let me finish, please, what the board would like to hear is what you think is the imminent threat from, you have a variety of charges, and things like Fiji, I don't think is an imminent threat, you might disagree, but the board is interested to know what you think is the top critical issues that, that they should suspend this man's license for thirty days.
With all due respect, Mr. Weinberg, you're not a participating board member, and whether you think that First Amendment specification meets the criteria for summary suspension is totally out of order and totally irrelevant. What, it's not a legal matter, it's not for you to usurp the function of the board, even if you are their legal advisor. So that kind of statement you just made is just improper as it can be. With all due respect, Mr. Weinberg, that is the province of the board members to make that decision. And I'm, I'm prepared to make the argument that I said I would make, and I have no doubt that the board will, will understand what I'm talking about and take the appropriate step.
So what we'll do is let the two attorneys make their arguments. Stick to the point, please, of what the board really wants to know is the question of imminent threat. Is it there with enough reason to, for us to consider suspending a license? When that's over, we'll adjourn into executive session, discuss it, and come back with an answer.
Is it the executive session, Mr. Weinberg? Is that, would that be appropriate? Yes, my question.
I believe that it is, that actually that what the government law says is that when considering a disciplinary proceeding, they can, they can go into, to consider, they have to come out to vote, but they can go into executive session to consider the, what it says is evidence, but I guess here we consider the arguments, and then they come out to vote.
Okay. Well, you made the decision.
So here's why I think Dr. Joseph presents an imminent threat to the community. The main reason is, notwithstanding three court orders by the Honorable Vern Perez, the Superior Court Judge, that this animal doctor, from January fourth on, refrained from using and administering controlled substances, and that he not used his x-ray equipment. That was clear on the three occasions mentioned in the specification of charges from, from the Superior Court Judge. He has, as evidenced by the exhibits to the, to the amended specification, as evidenced by the specification itself, when DPHSS conducted a search with an administrative search warrant of the Wazal premises, they found records that indicate the use of controlled substances and the x-ray machine. He has violated a court order. He thinks that he is above the law. Anyone who thinks that they are above the law is an imminent threat to the community. Anyone who, who repudiates in terms of public safety, the only reason that Judge Perez entered this order, which conditionally renewed his license on the condition that he not uses x-ray machine and not administer controlled substances, the only reason behind that order was the safety and the welfare of the Guam community. And when you have a man like Dr. Joseph that says, in effect, I don't care what the courts say, I'm going to keep on doing what I want to do anyway, if you're waiting for a better example of what constitutes an imminent threat to the community of Guam, I'm telling you you're going to wait a long time. This, whatever else you think about this order for summary suspension, you will never, in your lifetime, I can safely predict, see a more appropriate situation to enter that order of summary suspension. What does he do when he gets an animal into his clinic, which is obviously a pit bull terrier? He's treated this animal before, he knows exactly what it is, but he perpetuates fraud on the United States Air Force by calling it another kind of dog. And he knows that he's lying. He knows that it's fraudulent, and this violates federal law because a dog went over state lines, and you're telling me he's not a threat to the community? What are you going to do with a, with a, with an animal doctor who takes a dog in belonging to Joe Bamba, and he says, well, Mr. Bamba, we have to operate on the right leg? Guess what he does? He does two things that make him a threat to the community. He negligently operates on the left leg instead of the right leg, and he charges Joe Bamba for it. Now. Now, somebody like that shouldn't be allowed to do business, shouldn't be allowed to do business and take the money from members of the paying public on Guam who want their animals treated in a competent way. Any man who calls himself a veterinarian doesn't even have enough confidence to operate on the correct leg of a dog should have his license summarily suspended right here, right now, and given an opportunity within thirty days to explain himself, if he can, as to why he operated on the wrong leg and why on earth he didn't give Mr. Bamba a full refund of his money right then and there. He didn't do it. He got kicked out of Fiji because he euthanized a number of dogs he had no authority to kill, including three pets. Maybe that doesn't constitute a direct threat to Guam because it happened down there, but if it happened down there, it can happen here too. Now, I'll tell you another thing. I'm not going to sit here and go over every item in the specification of charges. I went out of my way to make sure you all received a copy. I'm sure you have. But I do want to say one other thing. It's not exactly like what Mr. Luhan was trying to say a few minutes ago. I don't blame him for saying what he said, but it's not entirely accurate, and here's why. Since January 4th, Judge Perez has curtailed and eliminated the license of Dr. Joseph to practice veterinary medicine when it comes to two key aspects of veterinary practice. Number one, he can't use controlled substances, can't have them on the premises, can't use them, can't administer them. Without that, how can he anesthetize a dog? Without that, how can he properly treat a myriad of injuries and afflictions a pet would come in with? And the second thing Judge Perez did, which attenuated substantially the license of Joel Joseph to practice veterinary medicine, is eliminate his ability to use an x-ray machine. If he wants to have an animal brought in for treatment x-ray, he has to send it out. He has to outsource that, and he hasn't done it. So what I'm trying to get at is, what are you taking away exactly? If you summarily suspend his license, which I strongly urge you to do, because you'll never have better grounds to do that, what are you taking away really? Taking away his right to use his x-ray machine? No, Judge Perez already did that. Are you taking away his right to prescribe steroids for Parbo, which is another form of diarrhea? No, Judge Perez already did that. So what's left? What's left is not much, and not much is what I'm asking you to summarily suspend. I want you to totally suspend his license to practice veterinary medicine until we can have a full hearing on the merits, which the law requires within the next thirty days, which my proposed order sets within thirty days. You can set it earlier. It's up to you. I think thirty days is a reasonable interval for Mr. Luhan and myself to prepare our evidence and go forward. So you're not really doing much. He's already lost two key aspects of his right to practice veterinary medicine, and much of the First Amendment specifications talks about his repudiation and his disrespect for the law. As much as his negligence in the performance of his medical duties, that also constitutes a threat to the people of Guam. Over and over again, it's been brought out in testimony that he has not obtained an occupancy permit or a building permit, which the law requires. Again, this man thinks he's above the law. And I want to say one more thing, two more things before I stop, and I'll be brief. No doubt, Mr. Luhan will mention at some point that Judge Bordaglio reversed the board's decision the last time they disciplined Dr. Joseph. He's going to try and act like that all of those charges that Dr. Joseph was found at fault on were thrown out. Well, yes and no. What Judge Bordaglio did...now I have a copy of his decision right here, and I'm going to make a couple of copies available in case you want to look at it when you deliberate. And you will quickly see that this four or five-page decision neither directly nor indirectly even considers any of the charges that were found against Dr. Joseph last year. Those charges are unscathed. It was you, the board member, some of you, who sat on that disciplinary panel and heard those twenty-eight charges for forty-two days, for forty-two nights. You know, because you heard those charges, what Dr. Joseph was guilty of. Judge Bordaglio didn't consider whether Dr. Joseph was guilty of malpractice, incompetence, dishonesty, any of those things that the board did consider. Those charges were never entertained by Judge Bordaglio, and you can easily see that in this very short decision, which instead of talking about the wrongdoing of Dr. Joseph, not one word was spent on that. The only thing Judge Bordaglio talked about is, was the open government law somehow violated? And he concluded there was, and because of that, he didn't consider any of the charges that this board spent, I think, forty-two nights deliberating on and found on all but one, Dr. Joseph was guilty of. Now, that's a matter of record, and in case you don't have easy access to it, I have a copy of that here too, that's your previous finding of fact. It's a matter of record. So...
I have a quick question.
Yes, please.
And this could be somewhat for legal issues as opposed to just this case. If a judge orders a provider not to use x-ray, not to use drugs, and that person continues to do that, why would it come to our board as opposed to the marshals going and arresting? I'm confused about that.
Well, it's several things. Dr. Miller, first of all, what we did, as soon as we found...as soon as we had the evidence to do so, we filed a motion in that proceeding for an order to show cause why Dr. Joseph should not appear and be held in contempt for violating three of Judge Perez's orders. That motion, for whatever reason, is still pending. Now, the second thing I want to say about it is, not only is it grounds for contempt by the judge to hold Joel Joseph in contempt, it's also grounds to summarily suspend his license because, under the Allied Health Practices Act of Title X, GCA, it's misconduct, it's professional misconduct for a licensee to defy the law of the territory of Guam, such as a court order. And that's why I put it in the First Amendment specification of charges. Does that answer your question?
Kind of. So it's...I think you, for a lot of the other board members, I think we...I think you might have the whole process reversed. So if somebody defies a court order, would that be a felony?
A felony?
Yeah.
I really don't know if it would be a felony crime, but I know that it's punishable by contempt if he did so. I'm not a criminal lawyer. Maybe Mr. Luhan could better answer that question. He does a lot of criminal practice. But what I do know is that he's defied a lawful order of the Superior Court of Guam, three of them. And whether or not it's a felony, it definitely contravenes the standards to which a veterinarian is held to hold his license because he's violated a lawful order of the court.
Mr. Abrams, I'm going to try and follow that up a little bit. The question about...the question of whether Dr. Joseph violated Judge Perez's order is currently pending before Judge Perez?
No, the contempt for violating...
That's what I mean, a contempt action. You filed a contempt action before Judge Perez?
Mm-hmm.
And so Judge Perez will rule on that question?
He'll rule on the contempt issue.
On whether Dr. Joseph is in contempt for continuing to dispense controlled substances, operate an x-ray machine?
That's correct.
That's before Judge Perez?
That's correct. But...
Do you have a hearing date on that?
No, we don't. But it doesn't matter, because if this board reads the First Amendment specification and they conclude that this is enough to summarily suspend him because he's defied court orders and he's a threat to the community of Guam for doing so, then they're entitled to summarily suspend his license right here, right now.
I think that the board is concerned that it's...
Be careful, Mr. Weinberg. You're not a board member.
I'm speaking for the board in the questions it's raised with me as its legal counsel. And I'm just...I'm trying to put it, make them clear for the lawyers. The board is concerned about its jurisdiction to make a decision about whether this...Dr. Joseph has violated a court order that a court is going to ultimately decide. That's its concern.
What's your question, Mr. Weinberg?
I'm sharing the board's concern, because right now, the board is saying, "Well, that is a matter within the rest of the court." For example, hypothetically, this board, if it were summarily suspended, it would already...and then after a hearing before Judge Perez, he could decide that Dr. Joseph was not in contempt.
It doesn't matter. Even if...let's say, assume arguendo, that Judge Perez heard the evidence, which he hasn't done yet, he's seen documentary evidence. Let's just say that after all that Judge Perez wanted to listen to and look at, he decided that it's unlikely that he would, but if he did decide that Dr. Joseph was not in contempt for whatever reason, that doesn't impede this board from making its own determination. That does not prevent this board from listening to witnesses and examining evidence that would support contempt of court, and they would be free to make their own finding variance or consistent with the decision of Judge Perez, if that happened. But so far, that hasn't happened.
I understand your argument. Related to that question is that you raised the questions of the occupancy permit and the building permit.
That's correct.
Is that...that's a matter within the jurisdiction of the Department of Public Works?
No, that's a matter that's within the jurisdiction of this board in determining whether a licensee has obeyed the laws of Guam, which is a condition to hold his license.
Let me ask you this question. Is there anything pending that's brought by the Department of Public Works to enforce those provisions of the law that you're citing?
Well, first of all, it wouldn't matter because this...let me just finish my answer, Mr. Weinberg, if you don't mind. First of all, it wouldn't matter because this board can make its own independent findings as to whether that law was violated, and I might also say that had done so in the last disciplinary hearing, they unanimously concluded that he did violate the law by not securing his occupancy and his building permits. That finding was not considered by Judge Bordaglio. There's nothing to prevent this board from going into that issue again and making an additional finding, whatever it might be, independent of whether Public Works is doing this or doing that. Now, second...wait a minute. I have one more thing. Don't interrupt me, Mr. Weinberg. I'm not going to allow you to talk until I'm finished. And the other point...
Try and answer the question.
No, I'm sorry, Mr. Weinberg. I'm still speaking. Thank you. The other point I want to make is, to further answer your question, is that there is a criminal complaint for a misdemeanor pending against Joel Joseph filed by Carl Dominguez arising from the failure to obtain the permits. Carl Dominguez went down to the police station.
Is that part of his plea?
You asked if there was anything pending.
Did you have a proceeding...does DPW have any proceedings pending against Dr. Joseph with respect to the failure to procure building and occupancy permits? Is it a yes or no?
There's a criminal complaint, yes.
There's a criminal complaint brought by Carl Dominguez?
As director of public...deputy director of the Department of Public Works, yes.
And that is pending in the Superior Court?
No, that's pending within the police station or the fifth floor.
It's filed at the...it's filed at the police station.
It's a police complaint.
I'm just trying to get facts. I'm not trying to argue law. I really am not. I'm just trying to get...understand what's going on out there that you're trying to enforce in here. Now, with respect to the controlled substance registration, is there anything that has been brought by the Department of Public Health and Social Services with...against Dr. Joseph on that registration as provided in the code?
Is there anything more?
Has the Department of Public Health brought any kind of administrative enforcement action on the registration that Dr. Joseph has, the CSR, the controlled substance registration? Has the department taken any action against Dr. Joseph?
Well, Mr. Weinberg, may I answer that question? Thank you. Without interruption, oh, please. Mr. Weinberg, there are two things I want to say in terms of an answer to that question. Number one, it doesn't matter because this board can independently determine in its own judgment whether Dr. Joseph should have his license summarily suspended for what is alleged in the sworn First Amendment Declaration of Charges. The second thing I want to say is, I am aware of whether or not DPHSS and other agencies are proceeding against Dr. Joseph on the basis of what was taken in the search and seizure on May 8th of this year. But I cannot compromise their intentions by telling you what I know about them. It's sensitive, and it's in process. That's all I can say.
But it's safe to say that there's nothing been filed or nothing been initiated in any kind of administrative action?
Filed with who?
By the Department of Public Health.
With who?
It would be before the Department of Public Health under the Controlled Substances Act.
Filed by Department of Health, with Department of Public Health? Is that what you're saying? I'm not aware at this point of anything they filed within their own department.
Are you done?
Yes, your turn, David.
Good. Well, first of all, I guess I've got several arguments to make here. And the first argument that I want to make is really to ask the board to be cautious in their analysis of, you know, the charges that have been brought by Mr. Abrams, because you can see that as Mr. Abrams speaks, he seeks of venom and disdain and hatred for this man. First of all, he calls him an animal doctor instead of saying Dr. Joseph. He can't even bring himself to be respectful to the man that he wants to deprive of a livelihood and employees that go with him. Secondly, the extent that Mr. Abrams goes, you know, in, you know, the examples he comes up with, a lot of them just have absolutely nothing to do with, you know, his ability to practice veterinary medicine, you know, safely. For example, how does supposedly him lying to an Air Force guy who goes to Minot, Minnesota or wherever that state is, Air Force base, you know, be a threat, an imminent threat to safety and health in Guam? How does that arise to him? Or the fact that Mr. Jo...Dr. Joseph resigned from his job, his contract in Fiji, and supposedly breached that contract in Fiji that has absolutely nothing to do with Guam? So he receives...Mr. Abrams gets a letter from some person in that organization in Fiji that says he breaches contract and, you know, left us hanging. So how does that breach of a civil contract have to do with, you know, it arising to be a threat of imminent danger to health and safety? Or, you know, the update that you have to analyze when you, you know, when you decide whether to give credence to Mr. Abrams' statements is that Mr. Abrams, in his hatred for Mr...for Dr. Joseph, has now breached several duties that he has as an Assistant Attorney General in his desire to, you know, to prejudice you against Dr. Joseph. He has now disclosed, he says, "I can tell you that the Department of Public Health and Social," or whatever it is, DPHSS, "has instigated an investigation, but I can tell you the details." Guess what? The cat is out of the bag though. And why has he done it? Huh? He knows he has an obligation, even... He knows he has an obligation, even if it were true that he is not to disclose investigations ongoing, especially if they're criminal. He has now disclosed, and why do you think he did that? Because he wants you to see when you look at him, this is a really dangerous man. He now tells us, in response to Mr. Weinberg's question about public, about Department of Public Works. Oh, but it doesn't matter. Besides, Carl Dominguez has filed a misdemeanor complaint, even though there's no criminal case yet. He has disclosed it. It's a complaint with, he said, with Guam Police Department. It has not even arisen to a criminal case. Because Mr. Abrams knows, in order for it to arise to a criminal case, someone in his office must file a magistrate's complaint and file it in the Superior Court of Guam. Then you have a criminal case. In the meantime, guess what? You've got nothing but allegations or accusations that do not necessarily merit belief. He complains that, I believe, Dr. Joseph has breached Dr., rather Judge Vern Perez', you know, orders, and he has filed an order to show cause. And he has filed it, but guess what? There's been no hearing, no hearing yet. Well, if it was such a big thing, if it was such a grievous offense, a breach, a grievous breach of Judge Perez's order, then why has Judge Perez not scheduled a hearing? Why is he not in a hurry to schedule a hearing so he can deal with this recalcitrant animal doctor, as Mr. Abrams says? Isn't that the best proof that you have a sitting judge who has heard this case, you know, for months, and is well aware of the allegations against him, that he is not in a hurry to rule on it? Isn't that the best proof you've got? That there is no threat to imminent, rather of imminent, you know, danger or safety? That's the best proof that you've got. He talks about Judge Bordalio, and he says that Judge Bordalio ruled, and, you know, overruled your decision and everything. And Judge Bordalio, though, you know, he didn't reach the merit. The only rule on, well, was the Open Government Act violated. And Judge Bordalio, you know, threw out your decision in which that, you know, took forty-two days of hearing. Well, my understanding, first of all, is it was thirteen days. But you folks that are, that took place here, rather than participate in it, know the truth. Is it thirteen, or is it forty-two? If it's thirteen, then you can see the venom coming down out of, you know, from Ben's mouth, you know? That poisonous venom, because it's designed for one thing, to prejudice you folks against Dr. Judge Bordalio for overturning, you know, your decision and to make you, you know, hopefully, rule tonight against Dr. Joseph. Now, I guess the other question I have is, how does this board deal with things that are occurring in court? Mr. Weinberg is correct. Why should this board, and I believe Dr. Miller, why should this board deal with things that are in the Superior Court? Since when and why should this board deal with things that, you know, are alleged to be violations of DPW or DPHSS? This board is not a boat for everything. This board, you know, has enough to do that it can't listen to the ranting and the ravings, you know, of an Assistant Attorney General that has, that is obviously out to get Dr. Joseph. So, and the other question the board has to ask, how can this man come before this board and say, "I want you to summarily suspend his license"? What license do you folks have to suspend? You think you have the power to suspend the license that was issued by Judge Vern Perez? Judge Perez allowed him, by God's orders, to practice, you know, to continue practicing December of 2012. Since when do you have the power, notwithstanding Mr. Abrams' advice to you, legal, so-called legal advice? Since when do you have the power to overrule a, you know, Superior Court judge's order? You think that by saying we summarily suspend his license, that Judge, you know, Vern Perez is going to issue an order saying, "Uh-huh, Dr. Joseph, guess what? I've been overruled, you're not practicing anymore"? He's asking you to engage, you know, in a futile act. And that is to do something that you do not have the power to do. Now, talks about this dog, about a bribe on by Bamba and Mr. Bamba. I guess the question is, you know, when did this occur? Okay? If he refused to return the money to Mr. Bamba, there is a solution to that. Mr. Bamba goes to small claims and files a small claim case. It's what? Oh, in fact, he's already done that. The hearing is August 30th. But let me ask you, how is that an imminent threat, you know, to safety and health? How is not paying fifty dollars, or two hundred dollars, or six hundred dollars a threat to that? Now, he, Mr. Abrams says that, and I believe I've addressed, he's talked about the occupancy permit. He's talked about Mr. Bamba, about Judge Bordalio's decision and order, Minot on the dog, Fiji, DPHSS, and DPHSS at this castle. And he then says, "Well, I won't go into the other charges." Well, guess what that means? My understanding is there's seventeen charges, and I could be wrong, could be more. But whether it's seventeen or twenty-seven, he's only addressed six. And I believe that he has either waived those specifications by, you know, not arguing about it and saying, "I won't go into it," or abandoned them. But in any event, I believe that those are not on the table any longer. So, I guess our position is that, you know, Mr. Abrams has not carried his burden to allow you folks to make the decision summarily suspending Dr. Joseph's license. And again, like I said, even if you folks wanted to, I don't think you've got the power. And anyone who says that you can overrule a judge, believe me, send him, you know, to him. Mind Doctor, because he's wrong. Thank you.
Excuse me, I would like to just say a few words in rebuttal to all of that. That's very good. I always enjoy listening to Mr. Luhannan observing his emotional tactics. What I'd like to say, first of all, is you're not overruling Judge Perez. Judge Perez ruled on renewal, only, just renewal. So, his license was conditionally renewed. What's left of his license means that he's still a licensee, doesn't it? Of course it does. He's still, he's had his license conditionally renewed by a judge. But that license was issued by who? It was issued by Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners. So, under the Allied Practices Health Act, you have the power to sanction and discipline and suspend the license of any licensee, regardless of how his license is renewed. Judge Perez didn't renew his license and say, "Well, I'm renewing his license, and that means that he can violate any of the conditions that a licensee is expected to adhere to under Title X." And he didn't say that, because that would be ridiculous. Having his license renewed, conditionally, whatever's left of it, either by the board or by Judge Perez, means the same thing. It means that he's a licensee, and as a licensee, he has to toe the line. And he has flagrantly violated the conditions of his having a license by his total repudiation of the law, by violating Judge Perez's order, three times, three orders by Judge Perez, and violating the law by not getting an occupancy and a building permit, violating the law by misdescribing intentionally and fraudulently saying a dog is one breed when he's clearly another breed. And goes down to Fiji and unauthorized killing of animals and pets down there. You know, there's so many reasons why Dr. Joseph is a threat to the community, an imminent threat to the community. And, you know, it's not like we haven't heard a lot of these charges before. Some of you were on the last board that adjudicated this matter and heard compelling evidence, and the board voted unanimously in support of charges that included failure to get an occupancy permit and a building permit. I mean, you've heard the evidence. Judge Bordalio didn't disturb any of that. He just ruled on something totally different, which is the open government law. So, there's no disturbing of those findings by Judge Bordalio. He threw them out because the open government law was violated. But on the merits, that's still valid to consider. I've heard Mr. Luhannan talk about whether I hate Dr. Joseph or not. Well, you know what? I don't hate Dr. Joseph at all. I find him disgusting, and I find him a quintessential example of a licensee who has violated the terms of his license. The way he cheated Joe Bamba, by operating on the wrong leg of Joe Bamba's dog, and then charging him for it. If that's not a threat to the paying public of Guam, an imminent threat, I don't, can't imagine a better one. And the negligence? How would you like to take your pet into an animal doctor who has operated on the wrong leg of somebody else's dog? Are you going to feel okay about that? And to allow a man to continue to use his license and do this again and again, that's got to be an imminent threat to the paying public of Guam. And that's my interest. As an Assistant Attorney General, my job is to protect the public interest. And when I see a licensee such as Joel Joseph flagrantly violate the conditions of his license, I have no hesitation in urging you to see that that's an imminent threat to the welfare and the safety of this island, and to summarily suspend his license. Now, I didn't go into all of the charges in the first specification. I get the ones that I thought I should explain more fully. But I didn't back off from any of those charges. They're all before the board, they're all in the First Amendment specification, and every last one of them are valid, and every last one of them are enough to summarily suspend Joel Joseph's license. Unless there are any questions by any board member, I'm ready to submit it to your objective.
Are there questions from the other board members? If not, I think the next order would be for the board to go into executive session and discuss my decision to come up with a decision. Is that correct?
I guess that's true.
Yeah. Okay. So, if Martin's a place where we can meet?
This place here, we're going to be tearing into executive session. Is this the only place?
You know? May I say something? I'm not sure, honestly. I don't practice much before boards, you can tell. This is my second time really before a board, you know, from last night. But, and, you know, I could be most, most like mistaken, but I believe that if you're going to go into executive session, it's to be considered that there has to be notice. Like I said, I could be mistaken. And if there, if there has to be notice, then obviously, we object to that. There's been no notice.
Well, I have, there are not many things, there are not many things that Mr. Luhannan and I agree on, as you can see. But I also have mixed feelings about going into executive session. I remember, at the conclusion of the last disciplinary case against Joel Joseph, the board deliberated in a public way with the public present. I could be wrong about this, and I'm not trying to overrule what Mr. Weinberg wants to do. But I think, in the interest of the public knowing what the board is doing and why the board is doing it, that an executive session is the wrong idea. Now, I'll defer to the board's preference. But I think that the public's right to know how the board arrives at its decision and what its decision is, in my opinion, and I'm not board counsel. But that outweighs the need for an executive session. And if I were to vote on it, I'd say deliberate before the public and arrive at your decision in a completely transparent and public manner. That's just my opinion. Like I say, Mr. Luhannan, I don't agree on everything, but we might agree on this.
Well, I don't think we're still agreeing. Because I'm not saying they can't go into executive session. I'm simply saying there's a step that they have to take before they go into that. That's all, that's what I'm saying. So, because, I don't know the state of the law, really, with executive session. But I'm one of those people that believe that, you know, people that function as judges, you know, and boards do function as judges. I believe you have a right to go into executive session to discuss it. But they can't make a decision in it. They have to make the decision openly. They can discuss the merits, but don't decide.
Mr. Luhannan, I think I have the answer to what I think you're referring to. And I think what you're referring to is Section 8111, paragraph C, which talks about the board going into executive session to talk with its lawyer about impending legal matters.
And this is the open government law?
Yeah, this is entitled by, this is the open government law, this section, yeah. And this is not what the board is doing here. It's going in under the section to, it's not going to consider, like, a legal action in which the board is in party. It's like, if I'm going to have, and I want to invoke attorney-client privilege, and in that case, you know, I have to, I have to sign something in advance, I have to sign something afterwards, that swears that we only talked about this litigation, and it has to be transcribed, or it has to be recorded, and then subject to being transcribed six months after. That's not what this section is.
Well, you know, I put on the record. Thank you.
Yeah, I did review that. I agree, I don't think that this is appropriate for executive session. So, I think we should deliberate if they're going to make a decision today. In open.
Oh, in open?
In open.
I think we should arrive at a decision. And out of an abundance of caution, I would go along with Judge Season.
As your hearing officer, I'm able to give you advice as to questions of law. All right? So, here's my impression of the proceedings. I do believe that this board can... I do believe that this board can revoke or suspend a license. Okay, so, and if they don't like the decision of this board, they can take it up with the court, with the decision made by this board. Now, the only thing before you, according to law, is to make, in making a decision as to suspend a license, you will have to look at whether everything that Mr. Abrams said does prove that there is an imminent threat to public safety. Okay, so you've got to look at the minds of the legislature. I don't have case law for me right now. You look at the minds of the legislature, whether this is the type, these facts as presented to you regarding violations of building codes, unlawful use of x-rays or controlled substances, and possible negligence to animals is something that the legislature intended to fit within something that is an imminent threat to public safety. So in making your decision, I think that's the only thing that you have to decide on based on what the arguments are here today. I think imminent is an important word here in, under the law. That's my advice.
Well, I would just point out, Mr. Hearing Officer, that that same section that talks about summary suspension also provides that the court will not interfere with that decision.
I don't think, I, I do object. I believe that you folks are now already in a deliberation. I think Mr. Abrams tonight should shut up.
I'm just saying what the law provides. It does, Mr. Hearing Officer, have that provision.
That's, that's why I don't agree with that.
There's something in the summary suspension section which does state that if summary suspension is ordered, that the court will not overturn or interfere, I forget the exact word, but it's in there, and I think Mr. Weinberg knows about that too.
I believe Mr. Abrams has finished his arguments, and he can't continue, you know, trying to influence.
All right. So we can open the discussion to the board member, or if you'd like me to start, I can start. Does anybody have anything they'd like to say in relation to this, or?
Are we able to consider issues that are before the court but not have, but have not yet been resolved? For example, it's been said that the, there's an order to show cause for contempt for violating Judge Perez's court order, which is before the court, but that has not been ruled on. And so my question is, can that even be considered by us more?
Well, our argument was made by both attorneys. So that's actually probably one of my gut feelings in this particular case is we are being asked right now to pretty much choose one of our most powerful tools. Yet we have, in my opinion, unanswered questions. Is he in contempt of court? I don't know. I really don't know.
Well, even if he is, is that pose an imminent threat to public safety? You've got to keep looking at that.
Well, that was one of the arguments, though, is that somebody who would knowingly be in contempt of court would be a threat.
Would it pose an imminent threat?
Would it pose, impose.
To public safety, the fact that, if true, that he violated a court order.
Right, but we don't know that yet. What I'm trying to say is, my gut feeling as a board member, acting chair, is we proceed with probably extreme caution. Because this has been going on for a long, long time. There, none of us are lawyers that are on board. Most of these arguments are eloquent and somewhat frustrating to listen to because I don't always understand them all and the way that the legal system works. So my gut feeling is, at this time, we don't know if he's in contempt of court. We don't know what's going to happen when Public Works. And if we were to hang our hat on those issues, and those issues didn't prevail, say he wasn't in contempt of court and that the issue with Public Works, Public Works didn't prevail on that, then we're back to square one. So my gut feeling is, we simply don't have all the information at this time. I think the charges are very deeply concerning. You know, we want all of our licensees to be good citizens, but we need the information to proceed. And I'm afraid, there's the issue of imminent threat, and there's, there's quite frankly the issue of the board itself, is if we continue to proceed and then we continue to get reversed, it, we're not getting anywhere. So if we proceed with caution and let these other things go before Judge Perez, the other issues before Public Works, the way I would like to see it work is, you know, we have in our rules and regulations that if we're found guilty of a felony or those things, then they have to report that to the board, and that can be an issue that could cause a non-renewal or suspension of license. But so far, we don't know that yet. And it kind of seems to me we have the cart before the horse. Is there any other discussion? Yet?
Well, I'm going to echo a lot of what you're saying there, Greg. A lot of what I see in these specifications of charges, and again, having sat on a couple of these things in the past, some very serious charges, and yet they're being decided by a belt of layman in terms of law. And I, I feel that if the, whoever's doing the investigation of these charges, or for that matter, the Attorney General's office, feels that they have very strong case on these sorts of serious GCA violations and USC violations, that that should be taken to the appropriate court that handles GCA violations and the appropriate court that handles USC violations. And if, if there are charges there that have enough merit to stand up in a court of law and be decided in a court of law, then the result of those charges, yes, can be considered by us. But I don't think we should be deciding what has the merit and the standard of proof of a court of law. That's my opinion.
I just want to say that, that what do we do with these people that are writing letters of concerns or letters of complaints? You know, we have Mr. Bamba on hand. I'm not sure what the gentleman is who wrote, who wrote this off. What do we do from here? There are complaints that are written and submitted to the board. Do we ignore those?
Actually, from what I understand, no, because this, this particular hearing is just about summary suspension. Everything else continues when you want. So I would imagine sometime in the future, we'll probably go through a series of hearings about the charges themselves.
We're going to need to set a date on the merits where the lawyer's going to present evidence at the next stage. All you're deciding if this is, is whether to suspend Dr. Joseph's license between now and whenever, it would have to be within the next thirty days. Temporary suspension now and a full-blown hearing on all of the charges, including the allegations about George, Mr. Bamba.
Yes. I guess the question I have is, we're going to sus, if we decide to suspend, are we overruling Judge Perez's?
I don't know.
So that's another question that I have.
Good question. You know, it's, it's been argued on both sides. We don't know. Time will tell. And that's why I said we're kind of, the horse before the cart.
So this will still allow, we don't suspend, it'll still allow to practice with condition, according to Judge Perez?
Yeah, of course, yeah, yeah. And I would imagine that, you know, we're hoping that he would not break that court order. But we don't have any, you know, the court, the way I would look at it, the court would say, hey, you're in contempt of court, and the marshals go, and there's a whole process, and then the board picks it up afterwards. It's the way, when all this started, that's the way I thought it was going to happen. So, and that's the way it could happen, right, in theory?
Yeah, it could, it could happen, where you wait for the courts. But I, I think that you're just going to have to see what happens in the, in the evidentiary proceedings that are before you. And, and you're going to have to look at the orders and, and see. I don't know what Mr. Abrams' evidence is.
Like I said previously, I don't think you need to worry about whether the court has ordered or not. You have the jurisdiction, I think, to make the decision today. If they don't like your decision today, they can appeal it to the court.
As I'm sitting here, listening to the arguments from both very capable attorneys, I kept thinking about a cat, a toy shepherd I had years ago. Best friend I ever had. I'm concerned that a veterinarian is not able to be able to do x-ray, is not able to do controlled substances. The reason I'm here, sitting at this chair, listening to these arguments, is not because I want to be here. It's because I feel that I should be here because of pet owners. I think our first priority should be to think of the pets and the pet owners first and the quality of care that the pets look in.
Any other discussion? So as a chair, I don't have a question. Yeah.
Is a, is a hearing going to proceed nevertheless in thirty days even if the board does not decide on summary suspension? Has that already been set?
There has not been a hearing set. If you did summarily suspend, you would have to have a hearing within thirty days on that, on that part of the law. If you do not summarily suspend, you can send a hearing at any time. Before or after.
So I just need to clarify then. If we decide to suspend, that will warrant a hearing. If we decide not to suspend, then there's no hearing?
No, you will have a hearing. It just doesn't have to be within thirty days.
Thirty-day rule has to apply.
You could set one as soon as the open, as soon as the open government law publication requirements can be met. Or you could, you could put it on the next regular board meeting and continue it, make that an agenda.
This is my position. I really want to be fair to every party involved, from Dr. Joseph to the owners of the pets that are seeking our support. I would like, I would like to understand. Are we allowed to hear these other people that are bringing cases against Dr. Joseph? To hear? Will they have to see their testimony without suspending Dr. Joseph's license?
Yes, you will, I understand your question. You will hear whatever evidence, testimony, and witnesses the lawyers put on. Presumably, that would include complaining people like Mr. Bamba and whatever, whatever other evidence Mr. Abrams has to substantiate the allegations. Yes, I think the answer is you will hear everything there is in Mr. Abrams' house.
But that won't be until a formal hearing is convened, though.
So clarification, one more time. We don't have to suspend, but we can still be allowed to hear?
Yes.
And if face of the testimony, we can decide on a suspension then, correct?
The next step in these proceedings, whether you suspend now or not, the next step would be a full-blown evidentiary proceeding in which Mr. Abrams puts on his case, Mr. Luhann, the cross-examines, puts on whatever witnesses he has, just like a trial.
We've been through that before.
Yeah, just any, you've been through those, yeah. And at that point, you will consider each of the charges. You will consider which ones have merit, which ones don't. And then you will determine if appropriate, what discipline is appropriate, depending on what you decide on the merits of, of the specification of charges.
Do we have a timeframe to, I know we've talked about thirty days. Is that the timeframe that we have to?
Thirty days is only suspended. We have to have a jury in thirty days. Quite a lot.
The timeframe, if you don't suspend, is really up to you. Perhaps Mr. Abrams might be able to give, you know, Mr. Luhann a kind of a rough note, an estimate of how mu, how many days or evenings it would take. It's a pretty long specification charge. Generally, only the lawyers are going to know how long they're going to take. That's something they probably worked out with the hearing officer.
Yeah, it just depends. I understood that we were going to be doing an evidentiary starting today. But the sooner the better for me, I mean, but talk to the board. I think that at their discretion and their convenience. But they're correct. If you do decide to suspend, then I think you have to have a hearing within thirty days. If you don't, if you decide to continue, have him continue practicing, then I don't think that thirty days applies in terms of the actual.
Does anybody want to make a motion? Each motion will be discussed. Court. Court make a motion. Did they call for a vote? Call for a vote on what issues? How would they do that?
Yeah, I think it says that they do, telephonically they could do it.
Please keep all exits clear and free in case there's an emergency, including those cameras right there, please. Mr. Rob Weinberg, can you assist the board staff? I need to keep these exits clear.
Can, can?
The cameras are blocking in case we need to get out in an emergency, even have somebody who's in prejudice.
Can we try and, whoever this is over here, sir, could you maybe move back?
Thank you.
Mistress. All right, I see the provision if there was a full-blown hearing, but I don't see it on the summary suspension. But I think you could just vote if you want to suspend or not.
So we don't really need a motion? There's a question, the reason we're here is that one question? Okay, so we'll call for the vote. And the question it has is very simple. Should the license be summarily suspended or not? And the way I'll word it is, a yes vote would be to suspend, and a no vote would be not to suspend. So all in favor of suspending Dr. Joel Joseph's license, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All in favor of not suspending his license, please signify by saying aye.
No.
So majority right now would say, oh, to suspend the license. Is that correct?
I believe that. Let's, let's take another vote. Can we just raise your hand?
I'll get this aim to go around the table so that.
No.
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 No, it is. No, it is.
And then I report to you.
Yeah, unless you want to try and... Can we schedule? Are we going to?
Okay, there might be one issue, Marley, you can talk to this. There, we were blessed tonight simply because of the fact that somebody left the air conditioning on this building. Turns off the air conditioners at four, forty-five P M, and there may be something like a $400 charge to leave on.
At least.
So that may be an issue with time. So I'm not quite sure, this, this particular department is on a very small budget, so...
What's this, what's it like about the air conditioning, is it bearable?
It's unbearable, especially if you fill the room right now, it's warm.
So I'm not quite sure how we're going to do this, so...
Well, the rules say the agency could schedule it whenever they want.
Then probably, maybe, I don't think we can do it right now, whatever, we have their calendars, the meeting, it would probably have to be a day, I can't hear.
Let me make a suggestion to Mr. Sisson and the lawyers, do you think it'd be possible for, for you and the lawyers to get together, kind of have a Rule 16-type scheduling conference where you all get together?
I have no objection to that.
And then make, make a recommendation on how many days and how much time, you know, to the board. And that, the board's meeting, Marley, when's the next one, early August?
First Friday August. First Friday August.
First Friday, August. Maybe we can present it to them on, as a, a hearing scheduled.
Okay.
We're going to have another hearing, right?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, this is, this is a preliminary, preliminary thing. That lady's far from singing in this, in this proceeding.
So on the...
Yeah, I would also suggest, prior to that meeting of the attorneys, to decide on, on when a hearing is going to take place, that all board members submit to the chair any planned absences, all files like that, within the next ninety days. And if you, if you know of any upcoming absences or things at work that you just absolutely cannot get out of, because remember, all board members are doing this on their own time, away from their work environment, and I think we should all advise the chair of availability for the next ninety days.
I should also let the board know that if you don't hear the evidence, you're not able to vote.
Agreed, you, you have to attend every session before you can vote, yeah.
Okay.
Those of us who've done this before, remember that.
Fighting, yeah, fighting, three of us.
So, at the next Rickards George, excuse me, scheduled board meeting, we will have a date, I'll be on our calendar, set that date, that would be proper, right?
Yeah, I think we can, I think we can try and set one, so if you and the lawyers can get together before, you know, say, end of the month, and, and give us the projected dates and times, and hopefully by that time, we'll know absences, and we can get together with Marley, and we can just block out some calendar dates. I think, I think what we're looking at is, you know, like what, in the afternoons, while we still have air conditioning.
Or different locations, yeah. That has air conditioning.
So is it okay, we'll, we'll meet with the hearing officer and Mr. Abrams, I guess we'll agree on how long, a list of witnesses, and I guess at the same time, we're going to meet the, you know, I mean, what time are we going to have this here? We do have a on calendar meeting.
Is there a date?
No, we're going to meet and see if we can board out a schedule. Friday, I'd like to...
When are we going to meet?
Uh, we could even do a conference call if you like.
Yeah.
Okay, so maybe, I'll set one up this Friday.
Okay.
That's all right with me.
All right. Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
In the same provision?